This Liverpool City Council meeting officially open. To start off, I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with Council's Code of Meeting Practice, this meeting is being, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. I'd like to start off by welcoming everybody here today and want to thank you all for taking your time to join us and your interest in Liverpool City Council, for those who are here in person in the public gallery. It's great to see you and for those who are listening online, thank you very much for joining us. Being the first meeting after the election, I'd like to welcome everybody here and welcome all the new and re-elected councillors here today. Now, to start today's proceedings, we'll have an acknowledgement of country and a prayer of council. And if I could please invite Reverend Paul Mossijip, was that kind of... from Liverpool Baptist Church to read the prayer of council. Could I please ask everybody to please rise?
We would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and the ancestors, past and present, the Cabragool people, the clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Dharawal and Darug nations. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have once again of meeting in these council chambers. We thank you for this great blessed country of Australia and for the privilege we have in living here. Thank you for the freedom we have to live our lives, to express our faith without fear of persecution, and to work and make a living irrespective of race or creed or economic level. Forgive us when we take these blessings for granted. At the start of a new year, with newly elected mayor and councillors, we pray for them, for their families and their support staff. May they be men and women of conviction and courage, determined to do what is true and what is right for the best of our community. As our lives are slowly getting back to normal, we can only plead before you that this be the end of the pandemic. There has been and there is still much pain and sorrow in our community and our country. We pray for physical, emotional, spiritual and relational healing at every level. Especially, we bring before you those who work in our hospitals, aged care facilities and emergency services, whose demand has been stretched to the limits. We thank you for their tireless work. We live also in exciting times in our ever-growing city, as people come from all over the world to settle here. But we recognise that there are also many issues and challenges that will arise from these growing pains. Give our leaders and their staff the wisdom to manage them well for the benefit of all. So into it, your hands, Lord, we commend ourselves and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. If I could ask everyone to please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem?
Australians and Letta's rejoice for we are one and free. With golden soil and wealth for toll, my home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. Enjoy the strains that let us sing and advance Australia fair. Beneath the radiant southern cross, we'll toil with hearts and hands to make this come the wealth of us renowned of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas with boundless plains to share, with courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. Enjoy the strains that let us sing and advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
So we'll read our statement regarding your oath and the affirmation of office. Under section 233a of the Local Government Act 1993, the mayor and councillors are required to take an oath or make an affirmation of office. Oaths or affirmations of office must be taken or made by each councillor at or before the first meeting of the council after being elected. For the purpose of these meeting minutes, I advise that the mayor and councillors took an oath or affirmation of office at a ceremony held on the 27th of January 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies? Now, ladies and gentlemen, just before we move on to... Oh, sorry, I will move condolences now. It's always a sad part of the meeting. And we have two today. So you can please indulge me. The first one is about Beverley John, also known as Bev Barfield. Tonight, we pause to honour the memory of Beverley John Barfield, known as Bev Barfield, who passed away last month. She was a prolific contributor to the preservation and promotion of Liverpool's history and heritage. Bev Barfield was born Beverley John Whitney in Lismore, in New South Wales, in 1941. In 1952, the Whitney family moved to Hargrave Park, now part of Warwick Farm, which was the beginning of Bev's ongoing connection to Liverpool area. At Hargrave Park, her father worked as a fire brigade officer and the family lived in a Nissan hut, a prefabricated metal structure. Bev also had fond memories of swimming in the Cabramatta Creek. In 1954, Bev started at Liverpool Girls' High School in one of their earliest student intakes. After school, she worked at the Daily Telegraph. She met Alan Barfield at Liverpool Baptist Church and they later married at the same church in 1963. Bev and Alan Barfield's first home was at 22nd Avenue West, Hoxton, and their children, Sharon and Peter, were born while they were living there. The Barfield family moved outside Liverpool LGA in 1972 to Kent Street Minto, where the youngest daughter Jennifer was born. Despite living slightly outside Liverpool's boundary, Mrs. Barfield's strong connection to the area remained. Volunteering was a significant part of Bev Barfield's life. Her daughter Jennifer also attended Liverpool Girls' High School and Mrs. Barfield volunteered at her old school's canteen for many years. Her volunteer contribution continued when in 2004, she became a member of the Friends of Liverpool Regional Museum and Collingwood House. Collingwood House, built by Captain Eberbunker from 1810, was one of Bev Barfield's great passions, and she served on the Collingwood House Committee as treasurer and then as secretary for many years. Council often called upon her to open Collingwood House for tours and school programmes, which included the cleaning and preparation of the historic house for visitors. Her work has ensured Collingwood House has survived in excellent condition until present day. Bev Barfield was also a member of the City of Liverpool and District Historical Society for many years, serving on the committee and helping in the archives. As a keen family historian, Bev also joined the Liverpool Genealogy Society in 2004 and remained a member until 2020, when failing health meant she could no longer travel. Council's Heritage Advisor Committee benefited from Bev's extensive knowledge to the Liverpool area, and she also sat on the other council committees as a community representative. Mrs. Barfield's substantial service to the Liverpool community was recognised in 2017, when she was made an honorary officer of the Order of Liverpool. She counted many members of the Liverpool community as friends, including several councillors and staff at Liverpool City Council. Bev is survived by her children, Sharon, who was here with us this evening, Peter, Jennifer, her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I'd like to humbly express my deepest condolences for her family and friends. Our thoughts and prayers from all of us here at Liverpool City Council are with you. May she rest in peace. Could I please ask that we observe a minute moment of silence? If everyone could please stand?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask that COP 02 and NOM 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5 be brought forward, please?
You can, councillor, but can I indulge you just to allow me to read the next condolence motion we have before we do that? This is one more to do. Would you mind? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, today's, the next condolence motion is for Mr. William Patrick, also known as Bill Sadler. And tonight, we honour, tonight we pause to honour the memory of William Patrick Sadler, better known as Bill Sadler, a former alderman and deputy mayor of Liverpool City Council. Bill Sadler sadly passed away on Wednesday, the 1st of December 2021, at the age of 93, after a short illness. He lived in the Liverpool area for several decades, until retired to Salamander Bay on the central coast 18 years ago. Mr. Sadler was elected as an alderman for Northward at a by-election in October 1973 and served until 1976, and once again between 1977 and 1980. He also served as deputy mayor of Liverpool from October 1974 to September 1975. Within Liverpool community, Bill Sadler was a strong advocate, particularly for the residents of Green Valley. Prior to his election as an alderman, Mr. Sadler served for six years in the Royal Australian Navy in the 1950s. He later worked in the automotive industry and was involved in several local car dealerships. He was also involved with local newspapers, The Liverpool Champion and The Liverpool Leader. Mr. Sadler ran as a candidate in several state and federal election campaigns. He was an independent candidate for Werewea at the 1969 by-election and the Liberal candidate for Werewea at the 1975 election and 1978 by-election. He was also the Liberal candidate for Campbelltown in the 1978 state election. Bill Sadler survived by his wife of 65 years, Kay, and their three children. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I'd like to express my condolences and all of our condolences to his family and friends, and our thoughts and prayers are with you, with Bill's loved ones at this very difficult time. And once again, could I please ask that we observe a minute of silence? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Can I just move that those condolence motions be accepted? Seconded, councillor Rhodes and Caliendo. All those in favour, against, declare carried. Thank you. Yes, councillor Hadid?
Yeah, I want to just ask councillors to bring forward COP 02 and NOM 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5. Bring it forward.
Yes, councillor, so that's the election of deputy mayor and the notice of motion. Do you have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded councillor Goodman?
Yeah, can we have it in the open voting, please?
Oh, just one moment. Just before we get to there, we have to move that over.
It's a part of the motion.
So can I just check for the councillors that are online? Are you guys hearing us okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we have a mover and second to bring those items forward, the notice of motion and the election of deputy mayor. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Okay, so if we move into...
Page 80.
Page 80, thank you councillor. I think councillor Hadid had this plan just to make it a bit more complicated for me, but... Great, thank you. Okay, so everybody, so if we can refer you to item COP 02 in the booklet on page 80. Councillor Hadid, you were going to move that open ballot be... You're moving it, open voting? Is there a second for that? Councillor McNaught? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. So now we'll move... Do we have nominations for... Okay, I'll now pass on to the acting CEO to run the ballot for deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. At the moment, I have two nominations. I have a nomination for councillor Rhodes and for councillor Hall. Are there any other nominations? Okay, great. So I seek a motion as to the method of voting, which will have to be by open vote. So can that be moved? Just move that? Okay. All right. So we'll go into the voting. Councillors, please indicate if your vote for councillor Rhodes.
Can you hear us there? So those who are voting for councillor Rhodes, please raise their hand.
I don't know if she's doing it online.
So I think that's... You keep your hands up? And we have councillor Amun.
George, do you have that? George? Done? Okay. Councillors, please indicate your vote for councillor Hall. Okay, so that's... Okay. So I declare the winner to be councillor Rhodes. So congratulations to councillor Rhodes.
I can invite councillor Rhodes?
Councillor Rhodes, on behalf of the councillors of Liverpool City Council, would like to invest you with the badge to the office of deputy mayor of Liverpool Council and congratulate you and wish you all the very best during your term.
I'd like to thank the councillors for their support in me in this role. I'd like to thank the councillors also who voted for councillor Hall.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, we can't hear what she's saying.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me thank the councillors for their support for me in this role. And I also wish to thank the councillors who voted for councillor Hall. As you know, we are both very much interested in the interest of the community. On this occasion, I won by one vote. I would like to say that I am aware that I've drawn the short straw, this is the short term, for being in the position of deputy mayor. And it's a seven months term, and then we go into the extended 12 months for the next two positions of this particular station on council. And I assure those councillors that also wish that this position, that they have got that opportunity, of course. In my position as deputy mayor, I intend to do my very best to bring the council on as one team and we work together as one team for what is best for the Liverpool community. Once again, I thank my colleagues for their vote and I will be open at all times to all members of the community. For your concerns or issues, please just give me a call. Thank you.
Councillors, there is a motion on the screen in front of you. Can I ask for a mover and a second, please?
Happy to move that way. Seconded councillor McNaught?
Thank you.
All those in favour, against, declare carried. All right. Thank you, councillors. We'll now, we'll now move to the notice of motion. The first notice of motion is on page 135 of your booklets, and it's NOM 01, Sydney Western City Planning Panel, as put by councillor Hall. Councillor Hall, would you like to move your motion?
Yes, I would like to move the motion with an amendment.
Yes, councillor, what is your, well, it's part of your motion, so it won't be an amendment, but exactly would you like to change?
Thank you.
I think we have to wait till he puts his motion forward, councillor, before he can second it.
Happy to second the motion. It needs an amendment based on the CEO's comments.
Yep.
And I will read it out, that Liverpool City Councilors appoint, councillors appointed to the Sydney Western City Planning Panel, SWCCP, be remunerated at the same rate as community representatives appointed to the Liverpool Local Planning Panel. That's the last bit that needs to be changed.
So councillor, is that, you've got three points in your motion. Are you, are you changing any of them three points, or?
No, there, no, there's only one point.
Oh, sorry. Just the one. Sorry, I was reading the CEO's comments. My apologies. So, so your one point is?
That based on the information that the CEO has provided, we, we were looking at whether we should be remunerated at the South West City Planning Panel rate.
Yep.
Or at the local, our local Liverpool Local Planning Panel rate.
All right, great. Well, I'll leave just before you go on to there. I'll, now that it's clarified, seconded for the motion?
We're happy to second the amended motion.
Yes.
Amended motion.
Great. Okay. So now councillor Hall, would you like to speak for your motion, or you kind of already did?
Ah, I think I already did.
Yep, great, wonderful. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Councillor Aggerdy? My virtual hand up. Just in terms of process, do we need to go out for 28 days for this? Are we changing fees and charges? I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is legal in terms of process. Can we just do this like this, or do we need to go out for 28 days? Probably a question for a legal counsel.
Thank you. Through the CEO, if this is a matter for which rates have already, sorry, for which a service rate has already been set, then yes, to err on the side of caution, it would have to go out if you're changing what was currently already set and voted on by council.
So we should probably add that to the wording?
Councillor Hall, are you happy to add that, have that added?
Yes, I would.
Great. So is the seconder happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy with it.
Great. Is there any other further discussion? No. If councillors are happy, I'm happy to put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare unanimous, or against, declare the motion carried. Next item is on page 137 of your booklets, NOM 02, titled IBIS Management. And once again, I will move to, I'll pass on to councillor Hall, if you'd like to move his motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one minor change, one minor amendment, and again, based on the CEO's comments, there is a report due in June of this year, and so my, I'm asking for the report to be brought back to the April meeting, but since that's too short, I'm quite happy to accept the June line, June date as the time it should come back. So if we modify that, remove April and just replace that by June, which is what the CEO's recommendation was.
Right.
Happy to second the amended motion.
Mister Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, councillor Caliendo?
Perhaps for the acting CEO. Were IBISs included in the, I think there was a pest management strategy that was brought before council, I believe it was about 18 months ago, were IBIS included in that?
I would have to refer that to the director of infrastructure, Raj Alter.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, IBIS, as the report outlines, IBIS is actually a protected native species, so it will not come within the scope of what the council are referring to, which is the integrated pest management strategy. That strategy is due to come to council around April, but this is a native species. It requires a separate management plan. And what the report outlines is that we're going through a, in fact, council is already undertaking a range of actions to, I guess, map and come up with management plans for the IBIS birds.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. I'll now move to page 139 in the booklets, NOM 03, the Murbank intermodal noise and abatement community engagement, as authored by the deputy mayor Rhodes.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. I also would like to put up the amended motion based on the CEO's comments, and I thank the CEO for his comments. Basically...
So just one, just one moment. That's, that's, you've provided that over to...
Yes, I have submitted.
Wonderful. Thank you. So do you have a second for the motion?
Happy to second the motion.
Seconded councillor McNaught? All right, I'll pass over to the deputy mayor, if you'd like to speak for your motion.
Yes, thank you very much, Mister Mayor. I thank the CEO for his comments, and I, I know we all agree that it is council's responsibility to act in the best interest of Liverpool community. There are many residents who will need more noise mitigation as a result of this development, and representing the community, I am requesting that council, in its duty of care to the community, advise what mitigation is available and how they might apply for it to be considered, regardless of who is legally responsible of the mitigation delivery. And it is always and always will be council's responsibility to inform its community of any assistance that they might be entitled to. This council has previously set programmes in place to assist our community to access government COVID... This council has previously set programmes in place to assist our community to access government COVID assistance packages. Council was not legally responsible for that assistance, but council rightfully thought that it was their duty of care in our community to assist them by means of information so that they may apply for that government assistance. There are numerous negative impacts on our community that will need to be mitigated as a result of the Moorbank intermodal development. The noise impact on our community is just one. Council needs to engage similarly as it did through COVID and through many other similar government projects that are in our local government area, to mitigate the noise impacts on those Liverpool properties that are impacted as a direct result of the intermodal development. I thank the council for including in their response the conditions of 14A, and everybody can see that it is a very, very complicated matter. And I thank the CEO for, in his comments, for saying that it probably is the best procedure for us to write to DPI, requesting consideration to be given to preparing a communication plan to inform residents in plain English so that we can all understand it of the requirements of the application of code B104A. And it is therefore then appropriate that council continue the advocacy, once we receive that information from DPI, and have that information accessible to all the people in the Liverpool community. So I put the motion as there, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that all the councillors consider that this is a duty of care from councillors, from council, to look after the community who actually pays our wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hagerty, you have your hand up?
Yeah, can I make one slight suggestion? Just with A, can we have add the word low cost, so a low-cost public communication? So, again, the reason I'm suggesting this is that, as per the CEO's comments, effectively, this is not our job. It's the job of DPI. And, you know, effectively, let's not turn this into another example of the state government cost shifting onto ratepayers of Liverpool. I'm happy to do a communications campaign, but as long as it's a low-cost communication campaign, and and by that I mean through social media channels, I have no problem with us advertising this through social media channels, it costs little to nothing. What I would have a problem with is, you know, if we sent a letter to everyone, if we put ads in newspapers, if we did other forms of advertising which would cost, you know, in the thousands of dollars. And the reason for that is, it's DPI's job, not council's job. So as long as it was low cost and through social media, I'd be happy to support it. Yeah, I'll put that to the mover, seconder if they're happy.
I think that the word low cost suggests that we do not value our community. So I'm not happy with the words low cost. I am happy with the sentiment behind it, that we are looking for ways of saving money at council. May I suggest a public communication through social media? Social media and other forms of normal social engagement with the community. Would that satisfy you, councillor?
I'm happy with social media.
Well, I think councillor, if the issue is, I hear both sides of this. Councillor Hagerty, you say low cost, you have a number in mind what defines low cost? Maybe that might be an easier way to, do you want to head a budget over to this?
Well, I'm sure if you did it through social media, you could do it for less than a thousand dollars.
I think that this deserves, councillor, the attention of council to make sure that they do communicate to the community. We are aware that we do not want to waste money, but I say again, we must value our communication with our community. I've said a communication through social media and other forms of normal social engagement. I'm not asking for any more, but I do not believe we should deliver any less.
Well, I'm not getting into.
Sorry, councillor Hagerty, just so we can go back to a flow of things here. Councillor Rhodes, can I recommend that maybe you put a maximum dollar spend on what this should be?
I'm not sure of how much money to put on that, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I think on many occasions, we've made several different motions where we are saying that our public communication through social media and other forms of normal social engagement, which might include at district forums, there are other forms that we do.
Yep.
I don't see that there is any problem with this motion as it stands, without bringing in dollars, and I think that it's showing the consideration of the community, that we will do none other than what we ever do.
All right. Thank you, deputy mayor. So I think councillor Hagerty, would you like to move that as an official amendment, because the mover has not accepted it?
Social media and existing council committees, how's that?
And existing what?
Council committees.
Yeah. Well, just going, I think everyone's expressed their view on it, so you'd like to, you're you'd like to have that added as a, those methods be used as an amendment, as an amendment to the motion?
I'll move it as an amendment.
Okay. Is there a seconder for the amendment? Seconded councillor Hull. So now we'll deal with, we'll deal with the, is there any other speakers? Oh, sorry, councillor Hagerty, no, we'll have to deal with the amendment first now. Would you like to speak any further for your amended motion, councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate my point, that as a ratepayer, I appreciate that we've got to communicate these important issues, but as a ratepayer, I've also got a responsibility to make sure that we don't have blank checks for issues, and that we have prudent, responsible financial management around these. And so what I was trying to do is just wrap a bit of scope around what's being suggested here, and it is possible to do this at little to no cost to the ratepayer. And what I'm suggesting here is that through social media and through existing committees, whether that be the district forums or the tourism committee, as long as they're put up as an item and that's used as a method to communicate with public, that means it doesn't really cost much money at all, it's absorbed within people's existing roles, and we're probably spending, you know, a handful of dollars. But we're reaching tens of thousands of residents. Alternatively, if we don't sort of define what a public communication campaign means, that could be ads in the paper, which can cost up to, you know, several thousands of dollars, it could mean a mail-out, again, several thousands of dollars, it could mean a TV ad, it could mean a radio ad. I just want to put, I just want to define here what we mean by public communication. I'm all for it, but let's just make sure that it's cost-effective and a good use of ratepayers' money.
Thank you, councillor, for speaking for your amendment. Anybody like to speak against it?
Yes.
Councillor McNaul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the sentiment of what councillor Hagerty is trying to get at. Definitely, I understand that. However, knowing our community, I don't think that through social media channels and existing committees only, that we're going to reach all of the impacted people. And I think we have a moral obligation as a council to make people aware of this new condition that's been placed. It's just an awareness campaign, but in doing that, I want to make sure that everybody who's affected is aware. You know, I, again, like I say, I take on your sentiment, but, you know, I think we need to consider sending information that goes out perhaps with rates notices, so we're not doing a separate mail-out, so we are already shifting that cost a bit. I just want to make sure that if we're going to, I feel that we're morally obliged to let all the people who are affected know, and I think we need to use more than just digital communication to achieve that.
Thank you. Any other speakers? This is just for the amendment.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I ask if it's possible to include a report on the cost of the measures undertaken as part of the broader initiative?
You can. That would be potentially either as another amendment, or unless councillor Rhodes is happy to, deputy mayor is happy to accept that, but.
I've got no problem with accepting a report as to the cost, but I'd like to just make aware to the councillors that a lot of how we communicate and whatever is going to be dealt with through DPI, so they will be sending us back information. Basically, how the intermodal is going to have to do this. The requirement that we are suggesting is that we oblige by what is that ruling. So I have no problem with a report to the cost incurred, not to date, incurred, the cost estimated following the instructions from DPI and Q. It's not entirely up to us. This is a matter that we'll be following on from, from what plans are put in place by DPI. So that's one of the reasons why I think this should be left very open. I'm happy for it to be discussed at the time that it is being processed. But to actually try and say, no, well, we're not going to do this, and we're not going to do that, I don't think is appropriate at this particular stage.
So was that a yes or a no? It started as a yes.
I would like, I will accept include a report into my motion, of course, as to the cost estimation, following the advice from DPI.
Yep. Mr. Jodakis, are you happy with, did you capture that? Great, wonderful, okay.
Can I just explain really briefly? Because the sticking point here seems to be what cost does, what cost does communication undertake, and what cost to council in particular? And taking on board councillor McNaul's comments, it seems prudent that going forward, we should be more informed, we should have that data available to us next time we, you know, we undertake a similar initiative, and I think, you know, going forward, it would help our decision-making.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Can I ask councillor Hagerty, does that satisfy yourself, or would you like to withdraw your amendment?
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
Great, thank you, withdrawn. Any other further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Next item is page 141, NOM 04, Liverpool Garden Competition, and the author is councillor Krishma Kalenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, the substance and the sentiment behind the initiative is in the background, which I'm sure everyone has taken an opportunity to go through. I take on board the CEO's comments about the sort of lack of engagement.
Sorry to interrupt you, councillor, can you move the motion first before you start?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to move the motion as per the book.
Thank you, councillor. Do you have a seconder?
I'll second it, councillor Hagerty.
Yeah, everybody seconded it. I think councillor Carnaby was there. Seconding, yes, councillor, please, if you'd like to speak for your motion?
Sure. I take on board the CEO's comments about the lack of engagement when the awards were discontinued in 2015. And I know that over the last term of council, we have done a lot of work in engaging with multicultural communities and other sort of non-traditional communities within our area, around the environment, around, you know, different issues that they face. And perhaps this is something that could be included in the ongoing engagement we do with those communities as a way of encouraging more diverse entries and, you know, as a way of catering the competition to not just the usual suspects. So that's just something for perhaps staff to take on board when designing the outline. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councillor McNaul?
Can I also, can I just ask the mover if she would add one more category, please? Because we have quite a large rural community, can we please add in a rural garden award?
Absolutely. The categories were not meant to be prescriptive, they're just meant to be sort of a guide. So if any other councillor or staff member has a category that's been missed, more than happy to incorporate that.
Yeah, wonderful. I take it the seconders are happy with that? Seconders are happy with that. All right. Any other further discussion? I'll put the, yes, councillor Hull?
Yes, I would just like to congratulate councillor Kalenda for putting this motion up. I remember when we had these garden competitions. They certainly gave the community something to strive for. A bit similar to having those Christmas tree lights in various streets, it generates community input, it makes them proud of where they are and what they do, and so I congratulate councillor, I should have thought of it myself, and when she actually raised it, I thought, damn it, I should have done that years ago. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Hull. I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried.
Any chance we can get a councillor who doesn't have his lawn enough award?
I think I'd have a conflict of interest there, councillor, so.
It'd be tough competition, you reckon?
Thank you. I'll now move to item number, sorry, go to page number 143 in the booklet. NOM 05, improving our parks for our residents, and I'll pass on to the author, councillor Richard Amun.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and fellow councillors. I would like to move the motion in page 143, please.
Do you have a second for your motion?
Happy to second it.
Councillor Goodman? Councillor Moon, would you like to speak for your motion?
Yes, over the past couple of years throughout COVID, I have experienced a few difficult things within our local parks, and they were extremely disappointing due to the conditions they were in. So I'd like to move this motion to have council look at a scheduled maintenance type of system to try and get those up to code, I believe.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers for the motion, or a speaker? So councillor Hagerty?
I've got some wording I'd like to suggest be added on to that, if the mover would be happy to accept it.
Yep. What's that wording, councillor?
George, I'll read it out while George finds it. Just that we note, the CEO's comments, in particular, comprehensive park operation review has been underway since 2021. And is due for completion in the first half of this year. A scheduled cleaning programme is in place for parks and toilet amenities, and an initial review of bins throughout the LGA was conducted in 2021. And then, just in light of the suggestion there about smart bins, maybe we do actually trial some smart bins in a high-traffic park and report back on whether they work, whether they're cost-effective or not, after six or so months. And since we're going down the road of Fogo, once we do introduce Fogo, why don't we introduce Fogo bins at the park? My understanding is that those bins tend to get full because families go down there, they have a picnic and they have lots of rubbish, rather than, and they get full because they dump everything in the sort of main bin, but if we had sort of Fogo and recycling bins down there, then perhaps that would stop that from happening. And then I think the other issue too, just in regards to the state of some of these toilets and parks, let's make it easier for residents to raise customer service requests. I know that in some of the areas I go to, it's not immediately apparent how and where you contact council if there's an issue. So if you had some updated collateral at parks and toilets to go, if you see something, or if it's dirty, or if it needs to be cleaned up, and the nice new branding, bring this number or scan this QR code and fill in this customer service request.
Yep, thank you. Is the mover and second mover happy with that?
Not really, just simply because going to the first half of this year and the actual study having taken so long, I think council needs to be proactive. Instead of waiting for all these reports, local residents are actually sick of waiting. So we need to have an action plan, and we need to be proactive towards this. Now, if we're going to sit there and wait for reports and wait for trials until we reach a decision on how to do it, it's obviously just delaying the people. So I think council needs to make a stand and just go with it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, councillor. And look, can I just also just make a comment regarding this? And I congratulate you, councillor Moon, on your first motion. And I congratulate you councillor Moon on your first motion put to council. Hopefully we'll see many more during your term. I think it gets down to quite simple what our residents, you know, want, and that's what I think everyone wants to achieve here. You know, we want great facilities, the best facilities. I look at this, for example, we have, you know, we have many, many parks, but we probably have five or six or whatever it is, a small number that are heavily, heavily used. And in those, we're lucky enough that we actually have bathroom and toilet facilities. What I struggle with is that you go to these facilities where, let's say, Casulla Parklands, which is a great success, and you know, you probably have 150 to 200 people there whenever you're there. Now, if that was a restaurant, you know, that you would frequent, there would be people coming in throughout the day and cleaning that toilet. And I think that council needs to invest in providing that level of service to its residents. So at least in the peak periods, that, you know, your facility, you have a facility that's great, but there's a lot of people times you walk into a public toilet and you walk straight back out because you won't use it. Right? So I think that ultimately that's what our residents want, and I think it's important that we allocate budget for that. So I think councillor Moon, I think in your sentiments of wanting to achieve something now, I think we need to allocate a dollar figure for that, because I think that's part of what this report is. So we as councils can make a decision, do we want to fund having extra cleaners at our facilities over the weekend? Acting CEO, did you want to say anything about the report?
I think the report's quite comprehensive, and it is about providing council with some information and stats and figures on where we need to be and where we want to go as this LGA grows. So we will be presenting a report in April that will highlight budget to improve the services of this area, and we're very cognizant that it's not at the standard that the community should expect.
If the motion were to go through in its current form, with regard to adding this point two in particular, a scheduled cleaning programme for these particular parks, mentioned A, B, C and D, is that something you could do through your current budget or would that need to be, do you need an extra budget allocation for that?
I'll just refer that to the director of community and culture, Tina Vano.
Thank you. Through the CEO, currently, what we're challenged by in a couple of those parks is the significant amount of antisocial behaviour. So what we're doing at the moment as a council is looking at ways of sustained activation at those parks so that more presence and physical presence is available through different providers. In terms of the scheduled cleaning, we have upped the ante, particularly at Big Park, because of that antisocial behaviour that we've seen, and which has had added an additional cost. So it will be an additional cost to council outside of the provision of cleaning, but I think it's a worthwhile investment in regards to what's actually occurring out in there in the community in terms of delivering a good service.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify something? I'm not sure who to direct this to exactly, but is the proposed addition to the amendment actually asking for added time or is it just noting that there's a couple of reviews that are due to come back, but there is still action that is proposed?
Yeah, maybe councillor Haggerty, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, look, I agree with the sentiment of councillor Amun's motion, that, yeah, let's prioritise this, let's get on with it. Now, all I was doing was noting, I'm not calling for things to wait, I'm just noting that we are, while we prioritise, per his notion, while we prioritise this stuff, that in the background, there are some sort of comprehensive reviews underway to find out why these things have failed and why, you know, in the long term, why structurally what we're going to put in place to make sure it doesn't happen again. So it doesn't, it doesn't say, let's not put in a schedule until this happens, it's saying, let's put in a schedule, let's pick up the service in these areas, but let's also note the fact that we've identified this previously and we're looking into it, and there should be some more comprehensive answers in the months to come.
Yep. So having said that councillor Moon, are you happy with that? Because I would also like to recommend to you a point to your motion that providing a budget allocation for $50,000 from the General Reserve to be able to deliver this extra level of service.
Yeah, great.
So would you be happy to add that?
Yep.
And are you happy to add councillor Haggerty's points?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, save us voting on that. All right, so we have that. Come together now councillor Harrell?
Yes, just councillor Haggerty's last point, that we make that information available for residents to contact the customer servicing. You may recall, some years ago, we asked for those signs to be put into the rural areas, and they were, and I think they were reasonably successful, they had that hotline number there. And the idea is that the more of those signs there, people walking around with mobile phones can make an immediate call. And so I would suggest that we use those current signs and make sure that we place them in the local parks as well. I understand at the moment that the original notion was that they should have been in the rural areas. I think we should extend that to the local community areas as well. So if you'd like to incorporate that.
Yep.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, great, thank you. Is there any other further discussion? Now, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. The next item is NOM 06, page 144, regarding civic place. But I've, can I ask councillor Goodman, the author of that motion, that we deal with that at close session at the end of the meeting? Yep. Is there a second for that?
Yeah.
Councillor McNaut, yep, all those in favour? Against, declare carried. Councillors, my apologies, and I particularly want to apologise to our speakers, because now we'll go back into the normal order of flow, we probably dealt with those probably a little bit too early. We sought to confirm the minutes from the meeting that was held on the 24th of November 21. Move that way.
Seconded.
Councillor Haddad seconded, councillor Harrell, all those in favour? Against, I declare the minutes carried. And any declarations of interest? Yep, all right, great. Thank you. And now we'd like to move into the public forum of today's proceedings. We have two speakers who are here today to present to us. And the first is Mr. Michael Byrne, the president of the East Liverpool Parks Association, would like to address council on the following matter, the Moorbank intermodal. Okay, great. So I'll hand over to you councillor McNaut, NOM 07, establishment of a Georges River committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just made a couple of changes around the motion, mostly they're just a bit of wording changes.
Councillor, are you officially moving the motion?
I'll officially move the motion, thank you.
Happy to second.
Thank you. If I can read out those, would you like me to read out those amended word, that amended wording? Is that council number one, establish a Georges River rejuvenation committee that meets bi-monthly and reports to council? Oh, thank you. Actually, I think it's up here on the screen now. Thank you. I won't read through it then if everybody's got access to it on the screen, the amended wording. This is the amended wording, yes, it's on the screen now. So if everybody's happy, I won't read through it. The sentiment's almost identical, identical, just with some gentler wording. I'm happy to speak for the motion if that's appropriate.
Yes councillor, please.
Thank you, and I thank the CEO for his comments on the motion as I presented it. The Georges River is an important asset to our community, one that deserves a committee of its own to oversee its journey to its full potential. The purpose of this committee is to guide and achieve cohesion between all parties, to deliver mutually acceptable outcomes for the community, the proponents and the relevant stakeholders. Frustration exists within the community about the fragmented way in which these projects are considered, and a holistic approach such as is presented in this motion aims to alleviate these frustrations. A lot of these, these projects have been in the pipeline for a long time, that's what drew me into community advocacy in the first place. So I'm pleased to be able to put this motion forward tonight to come to some more efficient resolution for the community and for the expectations. I hope my fellow councillors will support me and the community in this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McNaut. Any other speakers? Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, just a question, I don't disagree with the sentiment, but just in terms of sort of governance, there's, I could just say some overlap with some existing committees, namely the Environment Committee and the Tourism Committee. I just, I guess I'll put this one to staff, but do we see this committee creating issues in terms of, you know, where things go? Do they go to this committee? Do they go to the Tourism Committee? Do they go to the Environment Committee? Can we make it work? For instance, there's an issue about cleaning up Cabramatta Creek, does that go to the Environment Committee or does that go to the Georges River Committee, given that Cabramatta Creek is a major tributary into the Georges River?
Look, councillor Haggerty, and if I can answer your question and also speak for the motion, councillor McNaut, thank you very much for putting this forward. I think we have an amazing natural resource, being the Georges River, and I think it's very important, having grown up on it myself in Chipping Norton, in Chipping Norton Lake, there is such an amazing opportunity to give, to maximise this asset for the community. You know, how do we make kids, how can we go out there and hire a kayak or have a cup of coffee down there? Or just improve, improve the quality of the walking tracks and the safety, and we can go on and on about that. And I think, having discussions, so, and I think this motion here, I think has the ability to have the biggest impact on improving the quality of life in a positive fashion for the people of Liverpool from now into the future. You know, this is like, you know, unlocking Bondi Beach, if you can imagine, this is our equivalent of it. So, and so to your question councillor Haggerty, I think ultimately what this needs is, you know, the Georges River needs a cohesive plan that can be actually, can be delivered. So I imagine it'll be from time, and so that's, you know, there are multiple facets of it. Environment obviously is one part of it. At the moment, we have an old tip, we have multiple tips actually that are leaking leachate into the water. And the longer we wait, nothing happens. And I personally would love to see a community slash council-led vision for the river, rather than a developer-led vision for the river. And I think by doing this, and then from time to time, we would be able to bring in all those different people into it. Is that how you would see it working councillor McNaut?
That's right, that's right, Mr. Mayor. Exactly as you say, it's not, this committee is not designed to take away from other committees or take over from other committees, but rather to deliver that access to the river in the best possible way for visitors and residents.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Speakers for or speakers against?
Whatever you like at the moment.
What are we up to?
We've had one speaker, we've had one speaker for, so we can have another speaker for.
I will speak for the motion, but is anybody going to speak against the motion?
Can I move that way, put the motion? That we vote on it?
No, we haven't had two for or against yet.
Okay.
So we'll get to it. Councillor Rhodes, you want to go for it?
Yes, I'd like to speak in favour of this motion. I see where councillor McNaut is coming from. The Georges River has been clearly identified in all of our strategic plans as probably one of Liverpool's greatest assets. And I can see that there would be considerable benefit in a committee that was focused on the river. I know that we have got current plans that have been put before council, and I think that this would add to the importance of how much the Georges River is to Liverpool. We've got one chance of getting this right, we have a beautiful river, and we, if we concentrate on it and give it the attention that it needs, I think it will only deliver a better result for Liverpool. So I am fully supportive of the idea of us focusing on the Georges River, and I believe a committee set up for that purpose would be of nothing but a benefit to Liverpool.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Harrell?
Yes, just a suggestion, while I have no problems with your notice of motion, I think it's a great idea. I've been on the Georges River Combined Council Committee for a number of years, and that also looks after the Georges River. What I'm suggesting is that maybe we should have a tie-up between the two. So while it's okay to have your Georges River Committee, I do believe that you need to have some liaison between the two, because that, the GRCCC, as it's called, or used to be called, is also looking at the quality of the river. And what you're proposing, you know, what you were proposing, Mr. Mayor, is the canoes and so on, that has an impact on the quality of the river itself and the water quality. So I would think the GRCCC is primarily concerned with the water quality, and so I think you need to have, you need to have whoever the members are of this committee should also be members of the GRCCC so that you've got that tie-up.
I think councillor, the motion as proposed is that all councillors be members of the committee, so it's an inclusive, which would allow those councillors elected to the GRCCC. And I think that's the, is that the intent councillor?
That's exactly right, that's the intent councillor, so that we have got that input as well. So with all councillors on this committee, whoever is on the GRCCC will also be on this committee by default.
Yeah, well, what I'm getting at is maybe you should be inviting the GRCCC people to come to your meeting or to this particular one as well. I think there needs to be a tie-up, it shouldn't be in isolation.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, point six, a question. We're calling for expressions of interest from community members and stakeholders, would that be inclusive of what councillor Harrell is suggesting?
I think so, I guess I'll refer to councillor McNaut, was that the intent of that?
That's the intent of including the broader statement as stakeholders, yes.
Yeah, yeah, great. All right, any other, any speakers against?
Just, one more question, let me talk about stakeholders, does that include developers that are developing along the river as well? They're all part of this vision?
Yes, that's the intention.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? Right of reply councillor?
No, I think I've said everything, thank you.
Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. We'll now move on to page 56 in the booklet. Mayor 02, regarding the 30k speed limit private programme in Liverpool City Centre Core.
Both to the recommendations.
As a mayoral minute, I'll move it councillor, thank you. And I've been informed, I don't need a second for a mayoral minute, but thank you anyway. All right, huh? All right, we'll double check that. Do I need a second? No, I've been informed, I don't need a second, sorry. But I'm happy to accept it in spirit councillor. Just vote for it, that's the main thing. No, look, everyone, I think the motion speaks for itself. Any discussion? I'm happy to reserve my right of apply. Councillor Kalyenda?
Just a question, because my understanding is that Transport for New South Wales is expanding the 30 kilometre, the 30 kilometre per hour zones across other areas. I think recently there was advertisement of a similar trial in Hurstville, so it seems like they're quite committed to this project. What is the alternative if the minister and the Department of Transport for New South Wales comes back and says, no, we're keeping it?
I think there's, and that's a good question councillor, one, using us as a trial and, you know, we've, there's many interesting aspects of this, that how many people are actually complying with this and, you know, how actually feasible is it to drive down Big Street doing 30ks? Big Street doing 30ks? Now, sometimes you can, because when there is a traffic jam, it's easy. But I think there's work, I know that we did in the previous term of council, that can look at creating safer streets, you know, for example, two-way streets which Paramatta have adopted, which we were progressing down that. There, I think there are multiple different options, but I think it's important at the moment that we say, look, you know, this is, we've trialled, unfortunately the data's going to be good, because no one's been driving around, traffic is down over the last couple of years. So, you know, our community, I think, speaks very strongly against having a 30k speed limit, and you know, I think it's important that we go out there and try it for them. I personally believe that we should re-look at doing the two-way streets along Northumberland and George Street, and there's multiple reasons behind that. One, it actually slows, it does slow traffic down, because just for an example, drive down Macquarie Street and you'll see how it's a much, it's a more calmer, calmer area. Two, it also makes it easier to get to your destination, so you're reducing traffic. Because at the moment, if you've got to get to one point in Liverpool, you kind of have to drive all the way around and know which way, where to go, where two-way streets makes the city more permeable. My person would like us looking at that, but that is something potentially for a future discussion at a different time. I don't know if Mr Way, if you would like to add any comments to that?
Yes, Mr Mayor, through the CEO, the point you make there, it's Transport for New South Wales will have to make a decision. Yet, the pilot was being done to areas, the department have asked other councils to put up requests for expansion, that has not yet happened, and Transport hasn't completed the evaluation that they are doing. So I think if we want the Transport for New South Wales to review what they are doing, I think it's in order.
Any other speakers? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. Mayor 03, 100-day plan. Should be on your desk there, and is emailed to councils on Friday. Councillors, as we're all aware, we're here because of the will of the people, and who voted on the 4th of December. During that process, we had an opportunity, each and every one of us, to present ideas and what we'd like to do for the community, to allow them to have their right, and say, well, how does their rate money get spent, and how do they want their city to progress and go forward? Obviously, the democratic process, which we, which our western society is built upon, is the best form of community consultation. During that process, my team and I went forward with a 100-day plan to the community, and this motion starts the process and will hopefully guide council into signing the delivery of that plan. And I'd like to talk about, and I'll actually read out the motion that we have here. Now, and I will acknowledge some of this work has started, and I'm sure councillor Hagerty will point that up, because we have been having discussions about this. So, point number one is that council direct the CEO to start the process for a development application to prepare for the following swimming pool projects. A, a council swimming pool, and B, a swimming pool to replace the Holsworthy swimming pool. Two, start the process for a development application to prepare for the following parking projects, Northumberland Street car park, B, Bathurst Street car park, C, Ed Street car park. Three, investigate and prepare a report on creating 500 additional parking spots in Liverpool CBD, and making the current parking more accessible, focusing on the Northumberland Street car park. Four, investigate suitable locations for car parks near Liverpool Hospital and Liverpool Railway Station. Five, commence the design process for a continuous cycle walking track along the George's River from Cusula through Liverpool to, all the way to Pleasure Point, and enter into discussions with private landowners along the riverfront, seeking to grant council access, a right-of-carriageway over the land for the community. Six, commence design work to upgrade Chipping Norton Lake parklands with the inclusion of a new park on the corner of Riverside Road and Newbridge Road. Seven, commence investigations into the upgrades of the following roads. A, 15th Avenue from Kingsford Smith Avenue to Cow Pasture Road. B, Qantas Boulevard, with a focus on increasing the capacity for northbound traffic exiting onto Cow Pasture Road. Eight, take all necessary steps to progress council to becoming a net-zero council. Council should acknowledge that the environment is our most precious asset, and proactively work to reduce pollution in our local community, and protect and enhance our waterways and natural environment by ensuring, A, all new buildings that are being built consider solar, geothermal, tree canopy, stormwater, and provide a proactive resource to assist developers with this process in a cost-effective fashion. B, the tree canopy on our streets is increased to tackle the urban heat line effect that is happening in our suburbs. C, work is carried out to establish electric recharge stations in our LGA. D, paper use at council is significantly reduced as much as possible. E, opportunities identified for council to install solar councils on council land and buildings. Nine, investigate bringing back major events such as Starry Sire night, the night markets and the night markets in Liverpool CBD as part of Future Events Programme. Ten, improve amenity and activation of public spaces by investigating more opportunities for food trucks pop-ups slash pop-ups in but not limited to Big Park, Chipping Norton Lakes and the Cusula Parklands. Eleven, investigate and bring a report back to council on the establishment of an Austro delivery unit. The delivery unit would be dedicated to a team of professionals for the purposes of, A, making sure that Austro is a community with high living standards for its residents, B, improve the urban design of the community, C, provide consistency in development assessment, D, being potentially located in Austro, subject to further report on cost, E, improving the tree canopy that is being destroyed, F, investigating methods of forward funding infrastructure, including but not limited to parks, roads and drainage, G, provide advocacy that leads to more affordable housing and improved transport connections, such as 15th Avenue upgrade and the Sydney Water Sewerage Delay. Twelve, start the process of refining the ongoing service measures for development assessment services for the next iteration of delivery programme and operational plan to ensure consistent and clear assessment times are being provided to people lodging DAs, subject to the scale, size and scale of each application. Councillors, whilst this is quite a significant motion, I just want to touch briefly on these and the importance of them, because some of this relates to some, many of the things that we've discussed here tonight, that some of the people in the public gallery have brought up. Obviously, we know Liverpool is growing, and there has been a master plan for Conshill to swimming pool. This, what the difference between, say, point one and point two, point one is about doing a development application so the projects are finally shovel-ready. Because we know a shovel-ready project has more chance of getting funding than a project that is not. And the main thing is, our community expects us, they don't want to see plans, they want to see something physically actually built. So that's number one. Number two, the car parks. I don't know how many times that I've seen car parking strategies, and I think now it's about saying, let's make these happen. There is a significant benefit in increasing our parking laws. Look at Northumberland Street car park. Northumberland Street car park is a car park that has 440 parking spots built in 1965. It's an approximately four-level building. There is no lifts in that building, so the majority of those spots are inaccessible to many members of our community. So this is something that we need to deal with. The Bathurst Street car park is once again another opportunity to deliver better outcomes, and part of this might, part of this process councillors might not be saying, well, increase the parking in these areas. Maybe somebody might want to put their microphone on mute? Who's that? Someone got a baby there? Anyway. And increase the capacity, so it's about making the parking spots more accessible, number one. And number two, it's about, the next point is about adding the extra parking spots. Our city has grown, right? And we need to make it simple and easy to access. And by progressing to a DA stage with these projects, we'll finally be able to deal with this, that businesses are definitely looking for. We know, once again, let's look at different locations, right? We know the hospital is growing, let's look for different locations there, let's look at Liverpool Railway Station and see how we can get the state government, whoever it is, to do something about that. Point five about the cycleway, once again, with councillor McNaul and council has just supported the establishment of the committee, but having a, imagine being able to have a cycleway from Cusula all the way to Pleasure Point along the beautiful river. This is something that is better than the Bayrun that people talk about, and is, the main thing is, this is for our community, it's their river, it's giving them access. And if we commit to it, we can actually deliver it. We can take it from being a plan that has been there for a while, to making it into a reality, if we dedicate ourselves to be able to do it. Once again, point six, our community has grown. Now there's a wonderful opportunity with all the land that we've acquired in Chipping Norton over the years through the Moorbank voluntary acquisition scheme, to be able to embellish those lands and give it to the community to enjoy, especially with a new walking track going through it, and leading up hopefully to a beautiful riverfront precinct. And Chipping Norton Lakes, I think there's a, you know, it's, I grew up there, I used to jump my back fence and I was in the lakes, and unfortunately the facilities there have not been upgraded since. And it's time we do something about that, and I acknowledge there is a master plan for that, but making that a priority will allow us all as councillors to come up with a delivery strategy, and provide the council staff with the funds to be able to do that. Upgrading of the roads, you know, whilst we know 15th Avenue has to be upgraded and has to become a state road, I think we're all in agreement on that, the question is, well, where is the majority of traffic from? And, you know, we need to at least start getting from Kingsford Smith Avenue upgraded to Cow Pasture Road in the short term. You know, it's a short, medium and long-term project, and if we, if we can break it down in bits, in smaller pieces, then hopefully we are able to get funding from the state government to be able to, to be able to deliver that. I think Qantas Boulevard have been advised that will be, that's potentially part of a VPA that's coming to council shortly. And I'll, point eight regarding the environment, and I'll go to Mr Byrne's points that he brought up regarding the intermodal. We've sat here, we all, you know, this is not about being a greenie or whatever it may be, but we all like fresh air, you know, we all like, want to be able to go outside and be able to breathe, and I think this is a very important thing that we start doing. And I think we can demonstrate by providing the proper incentives and policies in place that this is not a, something that could potentially cost people. I think there is opportunities, if we sit around a table and come up with strategies, as we, as we start doing our strategic plan and start doing our new local environmental plan, we will be able to, we will be able to actually deal with these issues, and I've just realised that point 13 is...
Mr Mayor, are we able to amend that at all?
That particular point?
Yeah.
You're happy to consider it councillor, what would you like to propose?
I would like to propose that council adapts a trial at least for fully electric vehicles as part of the zero net emission. I believe that'll be something different and unique to Liverpool. In the past few years, a couple of years at least, we've seen an increase in electric cars, and I think Liverpool council, being the council that it is and the way that it's going, I think that that'll increase our chances of getting to where we need to be.
So has that been captured? Yeah, I'm happy to accept that councillor.
Also, if we can add to that, if we can see avenues or ways that we can, getting discussions with local maybe, how do we say, petrol stations or sites that we can put, powering stations for these vehicles as well.
Yep, happy to, happy to accept that.
Thank you.
All right. The, sorry, I found the second page of this, so, and look, the, if I can go on to... Yep, so if I go to point 12 now, we all talk about, at the end of the day, whether you're building a, building a house, or you're starting a business, there's a process you have to go through and you have to lodge a development application. And at the moment, most of these projects have a timeline, a Gantt chart, project manager saying how long this will take. And everything can pretty much be quantified that, except for the part of council, how long that will take. All we're trying to do here is provide clarity on how long it will take to do something. Yes, there are a lot of variables with it, but we should be leaders in this. Now, the relevance of this is, let's talk about it, we all talk about the airport, we hear about how the airport's going to be a game changer and how airport is not business as usual. If we get down to the simplicity of the matter, the airport is going to create employment opportunities, and that's why a lot of us here support that. But those employment opportunities aren't necessarily going to be out there in a, in a field, or, they're going to be in a building, and that building needs to be assessed by council staff. And if we don't start investing in that part of our organisation, you can imagine, these big multinationals that are returning, that are going to be turning up here that we've attracted, that our wonderful economic development team goes out of the tracks, but then they're going to be spending 12 months or whatever it is, assessing, having these applications assessed. So I think if we really want to embrace the opportunity that exists with the airport, our priority would should be to be investing in that team to ensure that we are a good place to invest and do business in. But what it also does, this provides more affordable housing. The longer that an application is sitting there, the longer it takes for the mum and dad who's just bought a block of land in Austro waiting for it to be subdivided. So there are massive benefits for our community in doing this. Now, 14, which I didn't read out, which wasn't there, which is about, another issue that came out is when you look at the Liverpool LEP, Local Environmental Plan. We have seen the challenges that have come up in Moorbank with the LEP being done in 2008 under the administrator. But in further interrogation, when you look at it, we have height limits which in my opinion are not appropriate for our suburbs. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not anti-development, but it's about having development in the right locations, near train stations, right? Not in our suburbs. So this motion calls that we lower the height limits to 12 metres in the following suburbs, Chipping Norton, Water Grove, Hammondville, Cusula, Preston's, Conshill, Cecil Hills and Green Valley. Now, council note that planning proposals required as per there, and point 14 is to start the process of creating the new LEP as a matter of urgency, because there are, the last thing, and I think we have a letter on our desk here, a timely one, about a proposal for a residential flat building in Cusula on Jacaranda Crescent. And if anybody goes to Jacaranda Crescent and has a look there, it's the last place you want to have a block of units. Unfortunately though, the LEP does allow that. So this counts as an opportunity for us to prevent the headaches and prevent the challenges that have happened in Moorbank from happening throughout the rest of our LGA. So I think that covers my end, I'll open up the matter to the, to the floor of council. Any speakers?
Yeah, I, just, I think people are probably going to debate point by point, but I thought I'd make it easy and just tack on a few points at the end, for the sake of making this less painful.
Mm-hmm.
George, I think I've said through... So what I'm proposing there is just, we change it from 13 onwards. That one's relatively the same, but it's, I also wanted to note that a lot of this stuff is underway. I don't want to create the impression that this term of council is kicking all these things off, when in fact, a lot of hard work was done by staff and councillors during the previous term. So I thought I would list things that are already underway. That includes, as councillor Moon mentioned, fast charge electric stations, there was already initiative underway in the previous term of council. There was already initiative underway in the previous term of council. Uh, and I know, I think it was yesterday, state government, um, has announced a scheme, um, for, for fast charge stations. I think Mr. Keane announced it, so we should probably jump on that one straight away. Uh, same deal with, um, electric vehicles. I think most of the cars now are hybrids, but we, we are looking at moving to, uh, electric vehicles. Um, the other two points, uh, the other, excuse me, the other few points I wanted to add here was that just in regards to parking at Liverpool Hospital, Liverpool Railway Station, hundred percent support that. Uh, but again, um, it needs to be sort of made clear that that, that should be the state government's responsibility and we're more than happy to work collaboratively with them. Um, and, and do what we need to do to make that a reality. But, um, as we saw in Edmondson Park, we, council shouldn't be paying for multi, uh, could be paying for, um, yeah, multi-story car park stations at, at the train station. That's a state responsibility. Uh, and just in terms of the way all this is supposed to work, I appreciate the sentiment from the mayor that, um, you know, some of this stuff we know we want to do and the coun- the community and the council are already all on board. Um, but just in terms of governance, uh, things move very slowly at times, but in, um, local government. Um, and a lot of that has to do with the Local Government Act. Um, and one of the key to the part of that is, is there is a thing called the Community Strategic Plan, um, where, uh, council is in consultation with the community, work out what the priorities are and, and, and get to work on them. My concern here is that if we charge ahead with these things without doing appropriate consultation and, and committing, uh, too much scope and money, uh, the local government minister or the state government might slap us on the wrist or knock us on the head. Um, so I just want to make sure that in terms of process and governance, that we're doing this correctly and, and that we don't, uh, put a whole bunch of effort in, into this, only to be told we put cart before the horse. So, um, we'd like to make sure that we, we do everything that we're supposed to do in the right order, uh, and that includes community consultation.
Yeah, thank you councillor. Um, I'm happy to, um, uh, accept, um, uh, these points. Um, but I probably should add a point eighteen that the, um, that, uh, funding, uh, be provided from, uh, general reserves or, um, or unrestricted, sorry, unrestricted, um, reserves to fund these projects. Because obviously the DA is going to cost, or it costs some money. Any other speakers? Councillor McNaul?
If I can just speak for the motion, um, and address just something that councillor Haggerty pointed out. I, I know that things do move slowly, the wheels move slowly, uh, in local government sometimes, but I am supportive of this plan because I think it sets the stage for what we want to achieve in what's a short term of council. And I don't think, and, and of course, everything will go through the correct, um, processes. But I think that this is, uh, it shows the community that we are here to work and that we have a plan. Um, and we, I'm happy to put it all out there and to work through it, but I think it shows, uh, leadership and positivity from all of us if we go in with a plan that we want to achieve in this term of council. Um, so that we can also be measured by that plan. And I'm more than happy to be measured by what we, what we put out there as a council and what we achieve. So I, I thank you for the motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, um, if I could just add another point in there with your, uh, approval, of course, would be that, um, we need to become more proactive in grants. And where you say funding be provided from unrestricted reserves, I'd also like to have included in there that council, um, direct more money if it is needed. So that this council is very proactive in, uh, not only, um, finding grants but also securing them. I believe that the, um, the election coming up is going to give us a great opportunity. And, uh, I would like to see council really prepared to take as much advantage of that as is possible. So.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy. I'm, I'm happy to accept that. I, um, I do acknowledge that in, um, uh, that in, um, we do have a, an officer at the moment who does work in, uh, um, I was about to call you councillor Bono, so not, into, uh, director Tina Votto's, uh, team. Uh, and I think that providing probably more resources in that department would be a, um, I think would be a very good investment. Uh, so I, 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 could we, could we ask that maybe, um, um, uh, you provide us, maybe we can ask for a report to be provided on how mu- what do we need? What does that look like? Because there's going to be a dollar figure attached. Um, yeah, because I think differently. We need to, we need to work out, let's, let's, maybe we can have a discussion offline, say, well, what do we need to, to strengthen that team and increase it? Uh, and make the necessary, um, adjustments. Would you be happy with that?
Happy with that, yeah.
Yep.
So do we need to change that point?
Yeah, so I think if we say that we, um,
Provide a report.
Receive a report back about how to, um, yeah.
In order to direct more money.
Yeah, council current grants. Okay, um, uh, a- any? So that we've had two speakers for, are you speaking against councillor Gooden? Speaking for?
Just to add something in.
Oh, yep, yeah, sorry. Yes, councillor, you want to add on?
Just to add if councillors can get.
So can you?
Just to add if councillors can get briefed monthly or quarterly on the progress of the Hundred Day Plan.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to add that.
Could we also put that on the website? So residents can see how tracking is done.
Would love to maybe get some Gantt charts. We can, sure, you got a few, get a few of them lying around. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really good. And it goes, this is probably to your point, uh, uh, Deputy Mayor, that we've discussed about K P I's for councillors and stuff. So it's being clear about how we're going to do things. I think it would be great. Um, happy to, um, add those points about. Yeah, they're working up. Um, uh, councillor Green. Uh, uh. And congratulations, congratulations on your election councillor Green.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess the, the only, I don't have to question or comment. Uh, the, the concern that I have is about fiscal responsibility. Um, but also being mindful about how and in what ways these proposals also fit in to already established plans. Um, I understand that, um, you know, in the, the heat of election campaigns, we all go out and we all ask, um, people what they want, our communities, and absolutely, you know, that don't have a problem with that. But I guess it's, you know, that we need to balance what, uh, our community expectations and what we can, I guess in reality, achieve in line with, you know, what we can, um, you know, what is fiscally responsible. Um, and, you know, ethical in our, our conduct with public money is, I guess, my, my comic or concern. I'm just flagging it.
Yeah, well, um, if I can say councillor Green, I think a, a lot of these, the, the expense at this point in time is, is, would be the progressing the plans that exist into a development application. That's probably the, at, at that stage, that's pretty much what we're, uh, committing ourselves to. And I'm sure the staff will come back to us with estimated cost of what that will be. Um, uh, and then, yeah, going forward, I think then it's for, for us as councillors to make decisions as we go along. Because, you know, planting a million trees might cost us ten million dollars and we have to make that decision. Um, so, but I guess once the, one, um, talking to the staff, what is going to be positive, this will help. This will help set a bit of a, a framework, um, about what the community strategic plan will look like, which is our ten-year plan, which can then help us flow through, flow through that into the Cowper Works programme.
Sure, um, just another comment, um, given that based on the pre- the presentation that we had yesterday, um, I would feel comfort, more comfortable in there being some other report back. I've heard a lo- quite a few times reference made to using, um, you know, dipping into unrestricted reserves and I guess, you know, I, I admit that I'm new to the role, but, um, you know, in other positions that I've held and other, um, boards, um, unrestricted reserves is something that, that is usually used, um, for exceptional circumstances. So I guess I'd like to, you know, make sure that there is, um, that we are very well aware, made, and made well aware of what those unreserved, um, unrestricted fu- reserves, um, are being used for and, um, that we don't leave council exposed.
So, so I, I think, uh, if I, at the moment, I might may, uh, pass on to the CFO, but I think that ultimately, if you look at, say, Khan's Hill, uh, thankfully, uh, the previous council put aside around, there's approximately, I think, four million dollars approximately into the, um, reserve to build, uh, the pool at Khan's Hill. So that can at least, there's some funding there that's been allocated for that. It's an unrestricted fund, but it's been identified that as well. There's also car parking, but I'll, I'll pass on to the, uh, the CFO.
Uh, through the acting CEO, um, thank you, May. Um, the, there is about four million dollars are put in restricted, um, internally restricted reserve. And, uh, the mechanism for us to internally restrict that was through a, a council resolution. And, um, if we need to, uh, if, if council is planning to use that money, we need to actually unrestrict that through a council resolution. So it's not unrestricted yet. It's internally restricted through a council resolution. Thank you.
So, um, Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify, when we're talking about funding for the initiatives outlined in your minute to be, uh, provided from the unrestricted reserves, can we have a dollar figure or can we have an amount that, that would entail? Because I'm also conscious that the budget process is kind of approaching in the next sort of three months or so. So if some of this can be incorporated into the budgeting process, that maybe that's a way forward.
Yeah, a hundred percent, uh, councillor Caliander. Yes, I think we have to deliver, we have to bring out the budget in April. So we really only have two months. It's very condensed. So this is our good way of putting, start putting things into there and through that process, we will be able to do it. Because like I said, I, I, I can speak, I know for for the car parking, for the car parks and for the swimming pools, um, you know, councillor Haggerty, I've had some brief discussions about that. But then obviously there's some, there's some probably more, um, there's a lot of projects in this. So especially about the greening and so on and so forth. So obviously they need more work, but which will go through the process. But you're right, if we get into the budget, then we will be able to go from there.
Sorry, just to go back to my initial question though, do we have a dollar figure in terms of how much is coming out of unrestricted reserves?
When it's at this stage, no, because it's, you, you have to look, okay, what's, to, to do a DA for, I know, if I can, Raj, DA for the swimming pool for, the most recent one we would have done was Khan's Hill, which, or no, sorry, to the Phillips Park. How much did that DA cost us to do that facility?
We'd have to take that on that, so, sorry, May.
I'd be estimating, you know, in the one point five to two million dollar range for a development application, if you want to go to full on to progress it. Yeah, that's probably at the upper end of the, uh, upper end of it. Yeah, but Khan's Hill doesn't get a swimming pool if we don't do a DA. And, and I guess that's where, that's where it gets down to. So I think the holes worthy, you know, a whole pool and holes worthy, you know, pool in cause, if in Khan's Hill can be funded through that process to get, to get it to that shovel-ready stage.
Sure, I absolutely understand. I'm not disputing the need for some of these, um, initiatives. But I guess from a decision-making perspective, we also need to know sort of how much we're signing up rate paid money for, um, because that would be responsible. Yeah.
Councillor Hall?
Yes, um, uh, my view on, on this, while I don't have any objections to what you're doing, uh, my problem is that council has to put up a four-year plan and a ten-year plan. As you know, every new term of council has to do that. So we, in the next few months, have to do just this. We have to come up with a four-year plan and then a long-term plan. And sadly, every new term of council does exactly the same. So every four years, you look at the ten-year plan, you chuck it away and you start a new one. So what I'm suggesting is, seeing as we have to have this four-year plan, I would suggest that most of these things that you've got here are put in that four-year plan. And as we do have a four-year plan and the way that, not we have one, when you formulate a four-year plan, you have to have workshops that look at all of the things that you want to do. And councillors are involved in that. That usually takes several months to do that. I would suggest that, since we have to do the four-year plan, that the majority of these things that can't be done straight away be put into that four-year plan. And that meets the obligations of the O L G to do just that. So while new councillors may not know of that, I've gone through several of these, as you have, and we know these things need to be done. So I just, um, alluding to the fact that we need to do this and while this is worthwhile, I think we should put that into.
Thanks, thanks councillor, um, Haggerty's, um, uh, uh, amendment or recommended, um, point sixteen covers that. So this will, this will start forming that framework into that process. But at least now what this does, it tells the staff, this is the way that we want to go and it starts a process and it will come up through, there will be consultation and we will go on that way. All right, is there any other speakers for or against?
Um, I'd like to say something, please, if I can.
Yes, councillor Moon?
Um, I just want to bring to my councillor colleagues' attention that in the previous terms and as councillor Hall mentioned, um, councils come in for four years, they do a four-year plan and then they do a ten-year plan. And then the next council that comes in tends to scrap it and start again. Now, the situation, I've, I've been a local resident for the past thirty-odd years. And over the past fifteen, maybe sixteen years, I'm not trying to bag anybody or try and have a go at anyone. We haven't seen any major changes or, or major things brought to, to the area, which is causing a, a, a lot of, um, concerns from, from locals. So I would like to see, um, a way where we can work together to try and achieve the goals that were put together for, for the community. Because at, at the moment, if we're going to come up with a plan, come, wait four months, do a plan, then wait another, you know, two, three months to get a DA or to, to get these implemented, that's a year, year and a half. Then by the time they get started on it, there's another year, year and a half, then council really hasn't achieved anything. We've been voted in to, to achieve certain goals and to, 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 to try and bring something to the table for the community. And if we can't do that, that means realistically we shouldn't be here.
Um, thank you councillor. Um, I'll now, um, uh, uh, invoke my right of reply. Uh, councillors, we, we earn a ve- very unique, councillor Haggerty, sorry, did you want to, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. Just thinking, uh, we, we have a short break between this meeting and the next meeting, uh, maybe to address some of the concerns of some of the councillors. Um, I'm, I'm suggesting, you know, up, up to you whether you accept this or not, but perhaps we have a report back at the next council to give a high level costing. So, you know, br- bring a report back to the next council for a high level costing on, on the below. And we, we get a figure, it might be, you know, you suggested a one or two million, funded from here. Uh, and then we can vote on it at the next meeting. Um, I, I take all the points about slowing things down, but I also take the point that, um, that this is a particularly unusual way to conduct council business.
Um, councillor Haggerty, just on that, I think the, being the short timeframe, it's going to be challenging, but I, I think what, what this process triggers is that we will be getting reports on these matters one by one throughout, uh, throughout the next few months. So by, at least by supporting this, obviously, nothing is going to be built until we approve it. So there are many numerous checks along the way and opportunities for us to, to progress it forward. But I, once again, I think this gives them, this provides that sort of clarity and the staff are going to go back on and working on that. And it might come back, we might turn around and say, you know what? That's too expensive. Let's not worry about that. Because a part of this is us sitting around a table and working out funding strategies, saying, well, how important is this issue? You know, if we all agree saying, look, these are important things, then that's very positive. Um, I just want to, I want to point, um, this out as well. Because of the delayed election because of COVID and here we are now in February, where, you know, council after an election should have been sitting in October. Um, the condensed timeframe and having such, have a chat with the manager responsible for this. Um, we need to work very, very hard and very quickly to get our plan out there because it has to be out, uh, in April. Uh, and there are numerous workshops that are, that are scheduled, uh, and consultation over the next, uh, two months for us to be able to meet that deadline. And my message for the councillors who are here is that if you have a project that you want to deliver, that this is the time to put it up, not as in right now, but as in, in the next, you know, I'd really give it consideration, put it up in February. Because I think that this is a, this is probably the most consultative way to do it. Because normally when we go to these workshops, what will happen is, uh, the staff, you know, Raj already has his ten-year plan, who will come in out there and bring it and say, here are the projects that we're going to be doing. And then, you know, we tinker it around and we consult and we work together and we come up with a plan. we come up with a plan. Um, but it's not necessarily, it actually hasn't been resolved until it comes into a, into a big document, which is in the CSP. But I think this is a simplified way of doing it and saying, well, here you go. But this is not the be all and end all. When the CSP comes back, we could turn, no, we don't want these things, and so on and so forth. But I would strongly recommend, if there's something that you want to deliver for the community, that to get it into this plan, into into the CSP as soon as possible, so the staff have clarity about what you as a council want to achieve. So when we sit, if we start with the end in mind, in the two years and seven months now that we have left, we could turn and say, you know what? The time that we've taken away from our families, the time that we sacrificed to get here, that all that we all did to be here, it's actually been worthwhile because we're able to achieve and we get some satisfaction of that. So.
So, for clarity's sake, you know, both for people watching at home and the and and the councillors, myself included, what we're not saying is go out tomorrow and build a pool. We're saying get moving on plans for a pool and bring them back as soon as possible. And and over the the next few months, some of these will be coming back bit by bit over age to the new end, saying, this is feasible, this is not feasible, this is what this needs to look like, this is where we're going to pay for this, this is what, this is where this is at. Uh, we're we're not committing, you know, just to to.
We're progressing, progressing is probably.
We're not getting, yeah, we're not getting too far down the line, we're not, not committing to many of these, we're we're just pushing them to the next step.
Correct, that's a good way of putting it, councillor.
Okay.
All right, um, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. The last, um, uh, just a mayoral minute, if I can just read this out, it's regarding the tsunami event that happened in Tonga. Yeah, just after this, if there's other citizens. So councillors, I won't read it out, um, but basically saying, it's basically providing, as council has done in numerous times, that, you know, we have many, many people from the um, uh, Tongan community here i- in Liverpool, um, and providing a $10,000 to help support um, um, the the relief efforts that have had, um, to help out Tonga and all the challenges that are there. Is there any discussion? Now, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Um, I'd like to, um.
So, Mr. Mayor, can we, um, can we have that it was passed unanimously?
Yes, passed unanimously, please. Uh, sorry, councillor Haggerty, did you want to say something? Because you disappeared for a while, and I saw your hand now.
Yep, sorry, just in regard to that thing, that point I raised with you, just about making sure that donations are appropriate. Um, there was an article about high heel shoes being donated. I don't think they're going to be of much use to people in Tonga, but as long as we've got some processes in here to make sure that, um, you know, what's being donated is appropriate.
I think the sentiment can be gathered, we 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 get it there, and if everyone's happy with it. Did you want to add that as a point, or?
No, 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 just as long as, as, you know, that everyone involved in here, including the stakeholders, sort of understand and that's communicated when we, um, call on the community to to assist us with this as well.
Yep, thank you. And so that was passed unanimous. Um, uh, I'd like to now call a recess until eight forty PM. Thank you. I declare the meeting resumed. Next item on the agenda is page 58, CEO 01, Annual Code of Connaught Complaints Statistics Report.
Happy to move that way, Mr. Mayor.
Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor McNod.
Sorry, I have a question on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, by all means.
Um, so, eh, as you can see in the report, there's obviously a big variation in terms of the, um, the budgeting required, just depending on the number of complaints and the level of investigation required. Um, I just wanted to confirm that, um, you know, there is adequate resources allocated regardless, because regardless of the fluctuations.
Uh, just refer to Ellen Whittingstall, if she's online.
Thank you, councillor, and through the acting CEO, um, yes, there's adequate budget for, um, all contingencies, for hopefully no complaints for the next three and a half years. But yes, um, there's enough budget there for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Now, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare the matter carried. Next item is on page 64 of the agenda, Plan 01, Quarter Report, Clause 4.6, Variations to Development Standards. Do we have a mover of the motion?
Yes, I'll move it.
Move councillor Harrow?
I'll second it.
Seconded, Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. I think someone has their hand up, John, in brackets, G, if I can, if they're, John Guest, has their hand up on the, um, Teams meeting. Um, if I can just remove it, thank you. Yep, great, wonderful. Uh, next item is Plan 02, page 66 in the agenda.
Happy to move that way.
Yep, yep, that's a revocation of the Independent Hearing and Assessment Panel Charter. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Harrow, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the matter carried. Was that unanimous, councillors? Yep, great. And I think the other one was unanimous as well. Yep, great. Next item is page 70, Corp 01, Investment Report for December 2021.
Admitted.
Move councillor Harrow, seconded councillor, was that seconded or, yeah, seconded councillor Goodman?
But I also have a question.
Yep, just before, did the speaker mover have a motion, talk to it now? I don't think so. Yes, councillor Goodman, what are your question, what's your question?
Uh, I have a question to the CEO through yourself. Given that the interest rates have not moved for some time now, how do we find ourselves having a deficit of $716,000 in in interest earned?
I'll refer to the Chief Financial Officer.
Through the acting CEO, um, councillor, we set the budget, um, the this current year's budget way back last year around March, and the, um, the the budget that was set was based on the forecasted, um, cash that will, that will be holding. Um, and obviously, um, the the interest rates is is lowest in the market, and, um, also the, um, the the capital value of the, um, the floating notes that we are holding, that impacts on these results as well. So the the estimates that we that we did were quite optimistic, but the actual is not coming to par. But we'll be monitoring that, and we are taking advice of the, um, our investment advisor as well to manage this. Thank you.
Well, a question through the CEO as well, Mr. Mayor.
So do you want to turn your microphone on councillor Haggerty, please?
So the question is, again, if the interest rate, in fact, not a change at all, in fact, it's just coming down. So why you sup, your assumption was you will get like an extra sixteen and seventy thousand, sixteen, seventeen, a hundred thousand from last year?
Through the acting CEO, again, that's based on the assumptions that we make, um, the, there are fluctuations, or, council has the ability to sometimes negotiate on the rates as well, more than what the the market is offering. So so when we are investing, we actually go to the market and negotiate if we can get a better rate, and and sometimes it's more. So we we hope we could negotiate better, but again, it depends on what the market wants. If they don't want surplus cash, or if there's surplus cash and they're not able to lend it out, uh, so the market, in that case, we're not able to get enough, uh, or negotiate any better rates. We just have to accept what's been offered.
But this is only interest rate. It's not property market or whatever.
Yeah, but we have, we got, remember, we got $400 million in the bank account, and if we are able to get, you know, at least 0.5 basis point extra, we are.
And your rate is still the same.
Sorry?
And your right, interest rate is still the same.
No, 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 the the reserve bank sets the cash rate, but but the banks can negotiate. There is, there is a margin where we are able to negotiate and get a little bit better rates. So when we were, when we set the budget, we said, all right, we'll be able to get something better. But unfortunately, there's too much cash in the market, so we are not able to get in good enough rates. Even though there is a bank, rate is constant, but we are able to get a little bit better.
Yep. Councillor Moon?
Next time, we have to be very careful with that, because the the budget was very good last year, and this year, man, you got a $617,000.
Count, thank you, councillor Haggerty. Uh, councillor Moon, you got your hand up?
Yes, I I just want to bring to to your attention is, um, $826,000 capital. Where it's not reflected in the actual charts in page 77 and 78, I couldn't see it anywhere.
Through the acting CEO, councillor, you are right. Um, the, as I've kind of alluded, the floating road, floating notes that we hold, which is probably 40% of of our of our portfolio, uh, we, um, we have, I think we made up to end of last year about $1.8 million in capital gains. So we have actually lost $800,000, um, in in capital gains, the value of the FRNs. And again, it's it's subject to market movements, uh, end of January, uh, when we bring you the report, it might change, but it again depends on how the market is reacting to that.
Yeah, but why, why isn't it reflected in the report, is my question?
We are actually mentioning that in the report, but but the will.
Well, if 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 you look at the figures and you actually digest it bit by bit, the figure 826 doesn't connect to anything that's in the report. It's just mentioned in the beginning of the report, but where that figure was lost is not actually there.
You'll probably see that in the, in the, in the attachments, where we will see a decrease in the in the market value, uh, but we are mentioning that it's there.
Okay.
And, I mean, I guess it's just for the information of the councillors, the actual results that we will report will, it will be in the end of, um, June, that's where we'll actually book this unrealized gains. And, I mean, it all depends on how the mar, market going to move.
Can I recommend that we actually show these going forward? Because that way, we're not actually showing false, I'm not, sorry, let me rephrase that. We tell, we can show accurate figures as as to how we're progressing, please.
Okay, thank you. Point noted.
Sorry, I, through the acting CEO, I just have one more question. Um, so from this first half of this financial year, we're down about 18% on what we had predicted, um, around about the million dollar, well, heading towards the million dollar mark. Um, is there any chance that that's going to improve, uh, in the next six months? Or are we looking at a can, another, like a continual gap?
Through the CEO again, um, we are actually seeing a a upward trend in the interest, interest rates these days. Um, we have seen a lot of, um, major banks, uh, coming to the market and raising money, uh, in the expectation that interest rates may rise. And, uh, we are seeing some upward trend, this might improve, uh, and and also, again, depending on the market, how the market moves, with with there may be an upside on the capital gains as well.
Thank you.
Great, councillor Haggerty?
Yep, can I suggest, uh, at a future briefing, we get our investment managers in, just to give an overview of what our investment strategy is, what the, what the, um, what the constraints are, um, both internal, based on policy, external, based on legislation, and, um, uh, you know, maybe look at past performance as well, although this year's been a less than stellar year due to record low interest rates and and and, um, COVID. Um, you know, still look at sort of long term performance, uh, from memory, we normally have beat expectations. But it'd be good to get everyone up to speed on, um, how how our investment portfolio works, who looks after it, um, you know, what they, just the ins and outs of that and and what drives it.
Through the CEO, um, councillor, yes, we can, we can arrange that. Um, we we also get a a monthly report from the investor, the investment advisor, which tells us how our our performance is, uh, is how we are tracking in terms of performance. Uh, we can actually make that report available to you as well. So we will organise, uh, our investment advisor to to come and brief the the councillors in the next, uh, probably the the Budget Review Panel Meeting. Thank you.
Through the, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Um, just one question, um, again, through the acting CEO. Based on the independent advice that the 2 million invested in the mortgage backed securities is likely to default at some stage, will there be an opportunity for council to realise that investment before the default actually happens? Or is it the report actually saying, well, brace ourselves, we'll lose that 2 million?
Through, through the acting CEO, um, the current advice is to hold on to it, not not to dispose it. Uh, as you can see, um, I think if you look at the, sorry, uh, just give me a second. Bear with me. I think there is about a million dollars, um, capital loss. If if we sell it now, we will be making a million dollar loss on it. And, um, they have taken a long term view. Uh, it all depends how, you know, how our, um, um, you know, population, in terms of, uh, in into the, what do you call the age, um, they'll be actually dying, so, um, I guess we are looking at a horizon of about 25 years from now. So the current advice is hold on to it and see how the performance is going. Definitely, we will not be losing everything. Um, possibly, we might lose about 50% of that, but that's how the market is behaving currently. But it depends on what what the council wants. If they want to dispose it and then and take a hit of a million dollars, it's it's your call. But the advice is to hold on.
Now, um.
No, thank you.
Yep, thank, um, thank you for that. And I think, look, I I guess the, um, the concern that, um, just, you know, if we're, if we're tracking at the moment, going on to councillor McNott's, um, appoint, if we're tracking around 18% below budgets for in interest income, so, you know, that equates to around $2 million approximately, you know, at what point do we, do we revise that in our budget and say, well, we were, we were, we didn't meet the forecast here that we did in, you said, I think, March, whenever it was last, uh, last year? What point do you come back and say, look, our actual budget deficit, because we're in a deficit position at the moment, this now change, there's now a $2 million deficit extra?
So through the CEO, we come to the council every quota.
Yep.
So we are, um, due legally to bring you a report end of, uh, end of February. Uh, there is, I think the next, next council meeting, you'll get a report which shows how we are tracking against the original budget, but it's just for the information of the councillors. When we do the financial report, end of June 2022, the actual performance will be measured against or reported against the original budget. So every quota, we come to you and say, this is what we set, and this is where we are, and this is what we are projecting towards end of the year. So every quota.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, councillor Harrow and Goodman, are you happy to add that, accept the point, move by councillor Haggerty? Yep, any other further discussion? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Thank you. Okay, oh, hello. We'll skip Corp 02, as has been dealt with, and we'll move on to page 83, Corp 03, The Appointment of Councillors to Committees and Affiliated Bodies. Um, I would like to move, um, motion, and this has been done, I think, with consultation with most councillors or representative councillors prior to the meeting. So, um, for the Aboriginal Consultative Committee, councillor, um, uh, Green and myself to be on that. Councillor Green, are you happy to, um, to be on the Aboriginal Consultative Committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, uh, thank you. Um, Audit, Risk and Improvement Committee, uh, it's comprised of the deputy mayor and one councillor. Uh, councillor Harrow, are you, uh, happy to continue or to continue on that committee? Yep, councillor Harrow, and obviously, recommended for everyone to turn up to all committees. Um, Kasula Powerhouse, um, Art Centre Board, um, we have, uh, the deputy mayor, if you should like, uh, councillor Goodman, are you happy to be on that board? Um, uh, councillor, um, McNott, uh, councillor Caliander? Yep. Uh, companion and companion animal advisory committee, um, uh, deputy mayor, are you happy to, um?
Yes.
Continue on that committee? Continue on that committee?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, just to clarify, on the CPAC advisory committee, it says mayor or delegate, deputy mayor and one councillor.
Yeah, so I'm happy to put a delegate. Um, uh, yes, deputy mayor, did you?
Yes, I, I, I will attend, yep.
I'm happy to step back.
Well, we got three couns-, there's three councillors there, is, or, or one can take as my delegate and then, so two councillors. Did you both want to be on it or you don't?
I'm happy to step back if there's too many people. It's another turn coming up.
Yeah. That work? Is it all good? Yep, okay, um, companion, okay, district forums?
Uh, companion animals advisory committee, was that done?
Animal advisory?
Hmm.
Yep, um, uh, myself and yourself.
Okay.
Um, rural, uh, forum, councillor Haral. Um, new release established district councillor Hagerty. Count, uh, um, two one six eight, um, councillor Green.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to take that.
Yep, um, and, uh, eastern committee, deputy mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, environmental advisory, uh, committee. Councillor Haral, um. Uh, you want to continue on that councillor Haral? Um, councillor Amun?
Sorry, can I put my hand up for that one?
Yep, and councillor Caliander? Um, heritage advisory committee councillor Haral and councillor Hadid. You both happy with that? Yep. Um, intermodal precinct committee, um, deputy mayor and councillor McNott?
Happy to do that, thank you.
Yep. Um, Liverpool access, uh, committee, uh, councillor Haral? Yep.
Did we skip the intermodal precinct committee or did I?
Nope, we appointed you already.
Okay.
Uh, we're up to access now, we're on to, um, sports committee, um, councillor, um, Amun and councillor Goodman?
Yep.
Yep. Um, tourism and CBD committee. Um. Four councillors, uh, deputy mayor. Um. Uh, councillor Moon. Um, I've got councillor Moon, councillor Goodman, councillor McNott, councillor Hadid. That's almost everyone, anyone, is anyone particularly keen? It's not there?
Oh, throw me in, throw me in.
Councillor Hagerty, thank you. Yep, okay. Um.
Mr Mayor, is there, how, how many people are actually on the environmental committee?
Uh, two, but we can add one.
So at the moment, there's myself and?
Councillor Haral, Amun and Caliander.
Okay. All right.
Um, youth council, we've got three people interested in it. Uh, councillor Caliander, Hagerty and McNott. Yeah, everyone happy with that? Um, I'll move a point, uh, that's been requested by the councillors, that we receive a report about, um, re-establishing a multicultural advisory committee that, uh, used to exist. Okay, we'll now move on to external, um, committees. The first one is the, uh, George's River Combined Councils Committee and councillor McNott and councillor Haral. Yep. Uh, the Liverpool Pedestrian Active Transport and Traffic Committee. Um, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, um, to attend that.
Mr Mayor?
Yes, councillor Haral.
Could we change that back to the traffic committee?
It's an external committee, so I'm, I'm, we don't, we don't, uh, we don't, I would assume we don't control the name nor the charter.
I think we changed it actually.
Yeah?
It used to be called the traffic committee.
It used to be the, it was, uh.
It just seems a mouthful to try and remember P A double T, what does it stand for?
LPATSE. Um, can I ask, uh, we'll, we'll take that, we'll take that on notice and as I, as I, I think there's another point about there of, um, whether we can also, um, whether we invite federal members of parliament to appoint reps on to that, uh, committee. Um, or maybe if, uh, Mr Waif, if you could, uh, take note of those two points and we can see if we can make them, um, make them happen. And I think that's the first committee that meets tomorrow morning. Um, MacArthur Bushfire Management Committee councillor Haral. And the New South Wales Metropolitan Public Libraries Association councillor Green.
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Um, oh, southwest planning panel, um, uh, myself and councillor Haral with the alternates, councillor Hagerty, the deputy mayor and councillor Hadid. Uh, the southwest Sydney Academy of Sport councillor Caliander. And the Western Sydney Regional Organisation of Councils, uh, myself and the deputy mayor with alternates as councillor, uh, Caliander and councillor Haral. And with that. And we have the, um, community, um, safety, uh, community safety and crime prevention advisory committee, which I have missed. Any, um, all happy to be there, any, um, oh, it's mayor and all councillors, so we're all there.
Okay.
Yeah, lovely. Okay, well, with that being said, oh, Mr Georgakis?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, we didn't catch the representative for the Civic Risk Mutual Members Assembly, unless we missed it?
Is that automatically the mayor or?
Mayor and, and I'll be a delegate, uh, alternate.
Yeah.
One councillor and a senior staff member, so is what they're asking for.
So we have to, we have to appoint the actual staff member?
Oh, no, not the, we don't appoint the staff member, but we just need one elected representative, so one councillor.
Yeah, I'll go on it with councillor Hagerty as my, uh, alternate.
Okay.
Is that ready, good to go? Okay, councillors, um, move that way, seconded councillor Haral. Any discussion? All those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare carried. Next item is on page ninety seven of the agenda, corp zero four, count back to fill any casual vacancy on council.
Move the recommendation.
Moved councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Haral.
I have a question.
Yes, uh, deputy mayor?
Yeah, it's just a, um, a general question that when the count back is initiated, is it a count back for all the candidates that stood in the recent election from all parties that didn't make it? So, um, it could be, uh, say if it's a Labour seat being that is leaving the council, it could be replaced with a Liberal or any of the other candidates, is that correct?
There's a bit of, um, I'll wait till we have a.
Through the, through the acting CEO, um, there's a section in the report basically says, and the advice we've received was that it'll be effectively, it reruns the election, making the vacating councillor ineligible and distributing each of their ballot papers to the next preference on the ballot paper.
So the next person, sorry councillor Hagerty, did you want to, um, say something of you?
Yeah, like, if, they basically, yeah, they take that person out of the ballot and then run the election again. So usually it would be the next person down the line, but depending on how many preferences they got below the line, it might not end up being that. But if, if that person wasn't in the election and, and.
So really, so does that mean more, more real, more than likely, it'll just go up to the next person in the group?
Yeah. Given most people vote above the line, it'll just go.
So you.
Sign on to it and you'll be the next person below the line.
Thank you councillor Hagerty, the question actually was, so when you say the group, it is restricted to the party of the departing member? No.
No.
So it takes in?
It's the whole election run again.
Everybody, so basically it is, um, that the departing member may not be replaced by a member of their own party, that's correct?
Correct.
No.
It's highly likely that will be the case, but it's not necessarily the case.
Well, Mr Mayor, to be honest with you, from my own experience in the past, what will happen? So you got the first five candidate elected, so who came in the sixth excluded last?
From all parties.
He will replace and fill out the, the vacancy. That's what, how it works.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear to everybody.
Yep, thank you. Any other further discussion? Councillors, if you can turn off your microphones, if you don't want to speak, please. Um, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare carried. The next item is corp zero five, page one hundred and two, um, in the booklet, uh, and it's about the Low Government New South Wales Annual Conference. Uh, councillors, I think this is, uh, happy to move the motion. Um, there's eleven of us, one of us already has a vote, as councillor Hagerty is a director of, um, um, of LGSW. So effectively, I think the question is who would like to miss out versus, you know, who doesn't want to go, councillor McNott?
Mr Mayor, um, this will most likely always be the case, that we will not always all get to have a go. Um, I'm happy to sit back this time and take a turn next time if that helps the situation.
Yeah. Yeah, anyone else doesn't want to? You won't be attending? Okay, so councillor Haral, well then, did you want to register maybe or no?
If, if you can't attend councillor Haral, then I'm happy to jump back in, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, great, wonderful spirit there, thank you everyone. I'll, uh, move the motion, I'll have a seconder, councillor McNott. Sorry for those on the screen, I'm missing your seconders, so have a night. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare carried. The next item on the agenda is on page one hundred and eleven. And it's the corp zero six, the annual financial report for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one.
I'll move the report.
Deputy mayor? Seconded councillor McNott. Um, I'll put the motion, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare the motion carried. I'll, uh, next item is on page one hundred and thirteen.
I'll move that way, since it's my baby, unintended.
I'll second it with a question.
Pres zero one, uh, the nappy and sanitary product report. Um, seconded deputy mayor, um, question, deputy mayor?
Uh, yeah, really, it's just a, a couple of amendments, if it's happy, if, if councillor Hachidi is happy with it, um.
Councillor Hachidi, are you happy with it?
Oh, sorry.
He's not.
Sorry about that, councillor Hagerty, sorry about that, how could I, how could I mistake you both?
I'm deeply, deeply offended for the comparison.
Sorry about that. Um, just, uh, a, a couple of extra points, um, that it should be in the motion that we limit the items eligible for rebate as identified in the report. And that council measure and report back to council as soon as possible, once the allocated funding is exhausted on the effectiveness of the programme.
Yep, happy to, um, yeah, that's a given, um, yeah, that's fine, yeah, absolutely. Let's see if this worked, let's see, let's see, uh, how much waste we took out of the system, that's the point of it.
Yep, so.
Um, can I just quickly speak to this one?
Uh, yes councillor, go for it.
Yep, um, can I thank staff for bringing this back quickly and for securing a thirty thousand dollar grant through the EPA? Effectively, this means it doesn't cost rate pay as anything, but it will save, um, rate pay significant sums if, uh, it's taken up. I think that the audit found that about seven percent of waste was, was, uh, used nappies. Um, and, um, I also want to point out that, um, the resident that brought this to my attention, uh, him and his lovely wife gave birth to twins around Christmas, so we already have two customers ready to go. And there we go, it, it, it's already working before we started. And I'm sure there'll be many more who'd take up this, uh, program.
Wonderful, thank you councillors, I'll now, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare the motion, uh, carried. The next item is, uh, infrastructure, uh, zero one, page one hundred and nineteen of the agenda, the local roads and community infrastructure, uh, program. Um, I'd like to move that we defer that until, uh, the next February meeting, uh, for us to get a briefing about the projects, um, uh, prior to, uh, uh, committing them.
Happy to second.
Seconded deputy mayor?
Uh, I have, um, uh, not necessarily amendment, but a request that we include the cost, um, that we include a briefing around the upgrades required to Jardine Park in Casulla, um, in, in that briefing.
Yep, great, happy to accept that, the seconder is, sure, yep. Great, okay, um, I'll put the motion, if there's no discussion, um, all those in favour, uh, please raise your hands against, I declare the motion carried. We now move on to the committee reports. The first, uh, page one hundred and twenty four, uh, committee zero one, minutes of the budget review panel, eighteenth of November, twenty twenty one.
Um, yes, I can move that for you.
Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Hadid. Um, I think we'll deal with this, I just, I just want to point out two elements that, you know, are just relevant, let's make a point and move on, because I'm sure this will come up in discussion in nom, nom zero six. Just point out that the councillors on page two or five and page three or five, which is one twenty seven, one twenty eight in the reports about, you know, we have not met bu-, um, one of the reasons why we have not met budget is because of the, the delay in subleasing thirty five Scott Street, that appears on page, um, page one twenty seven and also again, um, page one hundred and twenty eight, which also has the same item. So just want to point it out to councillors. If there's no discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare the matter, um, carried. We'll now move into questions with notice, and the first one is by councillor Haral, uh, regarding, uh, four thirty seven Hume Highway, which for those aware was the, um, the development application that, uh, Dr Moore, uh, spoke about today in the, in the public gallery. Councillor Haral?
Yes, uh, I'm satisfied with the answers to a degree. One of the issues I have, it's. One of the issues I have, it states that, um, paragraph, the Community Participation Plan 2019 also requires that public exhibition and or notification periods over the traditional Christmas, New Year period to be, be extended so as not to include the period between the 20th of December and the 10th of January inclusive. If I remember correctly, that was a notice of motion that was put through around about 2009 to address issues of the LEP being advertised during that period. And sadly, the residents were on holidays and didn't know about it. So the notice of motion was that there was to be no, uh, DAs or anything of in pub, public importance to be assessed and determined during that holiday period. I don't think the 10th of January is good enough. I think it should extend to the end of January. Even the council has, uh, I believe the, usually around about the 15th of January as the holiday period. So what I'm saying here is that from the 10th of January until the end of January, when people are still on holidays, they're not going to know about these. So, um, if I need to put up a notice of motion to have that changed, I'm happy to do that.
Yep, can I, um, there's a, there's a very, what you're trying to achieve is, I think there's a lot of support for it. And we all, I think we're all, without speaking fair, but I think we pretty much all agree with the sentiments. But I just want to go to a question of process here, and if I can, through the CEO, to the acting, uh, director of planning. The, when does the notification get sent out? Because this has gone to court, um, and maybe exercised their rights as a deemed refusal after the 42 days. At the moment, you lodge in the planning portal, the planning portal has X amount of time to accept or reject it. Then you have clearinghouse or I don't know if that, you know, but I, I guess, and what the point is, you know, i- if there's 42 days, how quickly do we get it out there? Because we could be in a situation where it's on, it's on exhibition, uh, and they've applied to go to, they've had the 42 days. So if you can maybe, if I could ask for that process to be clarified, please, to the CEO.
Um, through the acting CEO, um, so your question is, how long can we go with assessment of the application?
When does the letter get sent out to residents?
Okay.
So from, from the day of lodgment, the council, if we say we have 42 day period, which is the key period.
Yep.
Um, and that starts once it's been gone through the planning portal, when does the letter go out there?
Okay, is this in this particular application or in general?
Because yeah.
Can I take that on notice?
Yeah.
I mean, I've got Lena here and I can ask her if she can tell you.
Yeah.
Through the CEO, so it's no set timeframe, uh, for each application because it all depends on the processing time from lodgment, but it is always at the initial part of the, um, review of the DA unless it's missing significant application, uh, significant, uh, documents that would, um, impede upon the application being, um, proper for the purpose of public notification. So if we think there's a key document that's missing, we might defer it, reach out to the applicant in the first instance before we go out for an initial notification, but it always follows that preliminary assessment at that clearinghouse stage.
So, so through the CEO, it's possible that, that deemed refusal could happen whilst, and the consultation period hasn't concluded yet?
Correct, there's no direct legislative correlation.
Hmm, okay, so councillor Hall, maybe that's something that we can maybe look at for the next council meeting and look at that because that's, it's potentially an, an issue, an issue there.
So could I ask the question of Lena? Sorry, I don't know what to talk about. Um, so
Through the CEO, yeah.
Is it the end of January or do we, what, do you know what the period is that we had asked for?
Through the CEO, um, more recently subsequent to that, uh, notice of motion, the council would have adopted the Community Participation Plan that became a legislative requirement for councils to have. So I'd have to take that on notice, but the advice that we've provided to date has been that that subject application was, um, notified in accordance with the Community Participation Plan. So, um, it might be a question of potentially reviewing that to align with the intentions of maybe having a set date. So it is definitely post, um, the 10th of January or whatever date you may choose. But at the moment, under the Community Participation Plan, we do not notify in that holiday period as such. Um, but I will take on notice and come back to you on whether there's actually a set date in January as to when notification recommences.
Thank you. I don't remember what, what, whether or not we had a fixed date. I'm pretty sure it was simply during the holiday period. And that was from December to the end of, to the end of Jan, January is the best. This was in 2008, 2009. It's a while ago.
Yeah, so can I recommend that we, um, that maybe we, we have a, we have a meeting with staff about the matter and then look at what needs to be amended through resolution potentially?
Um.
And we'll notify all councils who are interested in attending.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it's worth considering that council actually, um, identify what they mean by the Christmas period? That the dates be set for what is that we're calling the Christmas period, just so that there can be no uncertainty about what, what is required.
I think that's what councillor Hall is going through, but it's, and it's a good point because many of our communities celebrate Christmas on the 7th of January as well, so which we consider. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the, um, we'll now move on to page 133. Question with notice 02, uh, once again from councillor Harrell about the ongoing illegal dumping occurring in Edmondson Park and generally in Liverpool, uh, LGA. So.
I'm happy to wait for the response.
Yep, wonderful. Uh, and the next one is, uh, on page 134, uh, from councillor Caliander. Question with notice 03 about the youth strategy.
I'm also happy to wait for the response.
Lovely, thank you. Okay, so bear with me for a moment, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, well, that takes us to, uh, NOM 06.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we, we move on, um, I just have a presentation. So according to the, the agenda, there's a presentation for the council. Yep.
Sorry about that.
So flowing on from the last, um, discussion that we were all having, um, a a series of residents have, um, put together a petition in response to a development application, which I'd like to present to council to make sure that, um, obviously it is taken, um, on advisement, but the other sort of concern I have also is, apparently petitions are not regarded as individual submissions. So if we can, um, you know, in, in response to the people that have signed this petition, if we can go back to them, um, just in terms of, uh, counting those as individual submissions in response to this development application, I think that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you councillor. I, I, I appreciate your sentiments, but can I ask through the CEO? Is that, I think the, the charters for the local planning panels, I think, talk about that.
I'll have to refer that to Nada.
Through the CEO, um, Lena, do you have the answer?
Yeah, I think the, the question is, yeah, is it, do there have to be 10 unique submissions or something? And I guess can councillors amend that so petitions can be accepted as separate submissions?
Through the acting CEO, um, the operational procedures that, uh, um, handed down as part of the ministerial direction by the state government do stipulate that the submissions need to be unique. Um, in saying that, we do, um, acknowledge the numbers of, you know, signatories in petitions and um, the, the reference to unique applies to, um, potentially when you have multiple pro forma type uh, submissions that say the exact same thing. Um, petitions are dealt with a little bit differently in that they're regarded in terms of the number of signatures. Um, but they're not discounted as they would be if it was, say, for instance, 20, um, exact replica pro forma submissions, and that's that reference to unique. I'd have to take it on notice as to whether, um, our community participation plan can further go into, um, what would define unique. I would assume so, but I can come back to you with some advice in, in terms of how it would align with the, um, operational procedures.
Sure, I guess, um, my request was not, not necessarily about amending the, the, the process or the charter, but obviously making sure that we infranchise as many of our residents in the process and allow, allow them to express their opinion in, um, as sort of accessible way as possible. Um, obviously there are, you know, not a number of people who have put their name to a petition in response to this development application. So, you know, discounting what they have put forward or, um, or saying that it doesn't align, um, rather than kind of going back and saying, you know, there's not enough submissions or whatnot, I, I would much prefer to see us engaging with them to kind of incorporate the criticisms that they may have or, you know, the, the submissions that they have into, um, the, the, the staff response to, to the development application. So rather than circumventing process or whatever, um, use this as potentially an opportunity to, to perhaps meet with the, the people that have provided, um, a response to this or put their name to a petition and then, um, go from there.
Yeah, wonderful. I think, I think we can take it on board. And I guess my point about is for the next one that comes up, because one thing's for sure, we'll definitely have another petition in front of us in this term of council. So it's, yeah. All right, wonderful. Uh, thank you for that councillor Caliander. I did have a piece of paper that I need now. While I'm looking for it, um, councillors, um, NOM 06 and, uh, the matter, um, I believe we need to go into closed session to be able to, um, discuss it as there are matters of commercial sensitivity. That I had it written down exactly. It's here in one of these pieces of paper, so my apologies everyone. Here we go. I'd like to move that council now move into closed session to deal with, um, NOM 06, um, to deal with a confidential item pursuant to the provisions of section 10A, 2A of the Law Government Act because it contains, um, matters that have a commercial sensitivity. Have a second there? Yep.
Can I do that for you?
Seconding Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
All right, um, all those in favour? Against, I declare carried. And if I could, if I could ask, um, so now for those, members of the public, um, the live stream will, uh, uh, will, will be suspended. Um, and, uh, I will move that we have a, a 10 minute, uh, a break and reconvene at 9:45 PM. We're dealt with a confidential matter, confidential. Mayor 05, that, um, council acknowledges the contributions and capabilities of the CEO of the course of his employment with council, knowing that he was employed for varying roles for seven years. Note that the current CEO's contract will expire on November, uh, 30th of November, 2025. Three, terminate the CEO's contract from the 11th of February, 2022, under section 10.35 of the employment contract. Four, direct the mayor to enter direct negotiation of the CEO to formally agree on a deed of settlement amount. Five, direct the mayor to notify the CEO in writing of the decision to terminate the employment contract within 24 hours of the conclusion of the meeting. Six, direct the mayor to notify the CEO in writing within fours of reaching agreement on the deed of settlement, including the monetary fee being paid by council upon termination on being put to the council, uh, motion was carried. Um, Mayor 06 is, one, council notes that Dr Eddie Jackson will be terminated from position as CEO on the 11th of February, 2022. Two, undertake competitive process for appointing a CEO. Three, immediately seek the services by way of RFQ for a suitably independent consultant to assist in recruitment process whilst consulting LGNSW. Four, immediately seek the services of an independent property advisor to participate in the recruitment process. Five, establish a working group with the delegation of council to undertake the following tasks. A, work with the appointed independent consultant to draft the finalizer position description, uh, for the CEO role. B, provide instruction to the appointed consultant on advertising and interview arrangement. C, with guidance and assistance from the independent consultant, negotiate and agree on impractical contract terms subject to council approval by council with the preferred candidate. D, with guidance from, with guidance, uh, from the appointed independent consultant, prepare a report to the council that provides a detailed assessment of the interviewed candidates and makes a recommendation for appointment by council. Six, notes of the found decisions appointed CEO we made by council as required by section 344 of the Law Government Act, uh, 1983. Seven, appoints Peter Dipless as acting CEO with all delegated authority currently assigned to the position as CEO for up to 12 months from February, 2022 or until such time a new permanent CEO, uh, is appointed and commencing the position, whichever is the lesser period. Eight, delegate authority to the mayor to negotiate on behalf of council all suitable terms with Mr Dipless, uh, acting CEO, uh, for their appointment to the role of, uh, acting CEO. And nine, note that once a permanent CEO is appointed, a separate committee will need to be established and monitor performance indicators for the new CEO on being put, the motion was put. And if I can, if I can, the last one could be pulled up regarding, um, NOM 06, please.
Sorry, are we resuming through the normal page? Are we exiting this page or we're staying in, in closed session at the moment?
Well, we're just, no, we're out of closed session. We're just reading the, um, reading the motions that were passed and we'll close the meeting.
Apologies, just one, one moment. Because Susan wasn't part of the meeting, we're just now inviting her to this meeting so she can share her screen.
Okay.
That was the, and then, and then she, and then everybody will be able to.
Do you want me to just go there and read it from there or?
She'll be right.
Yeah, but actually we should, no, we should put it on the screen.
Uh, through the acting CEO, we'll need to go back into open session and read them back onto the record.
We are in open session now.
Uh, it, it's very limited as to who's on the screen if the other call is reconnected.
I think we are on the other call. You can, you can just leave this call and go to the other one.
Those, uh, those online can stay on this line. That's fine. The, the web stream is streaming. It's seamless for the people watching from home. Um, when it was in closed session, they were getting a message that's advised them that we're in closed session and now that they're, they're aware that it is open session. It's now on the screen.
Yep, thank you. So the motion is that council notes the following resolutions of council from the 5th of February, 2022, meaning to engage a suitably qualified organisation to undertake a full review audit on the civic place project's inception, including but not limited to the changes of the design to the value for money and resources to be allocated from the unrestricted reserve to undertake this review. Uh, next point, provide all council a comprehensive briefing on the project development agreement relating to civil, Liverpool Civic Place Project, including but not limited to the scope, findings and recommendations of previous reviews and audits by the New South Wales Audit General, council's, uh, risk, audit, risk and improvement, uh, committee, prosperity of advisors, external property advisors, OCM. An update on plans to secure tenants by 1st of July, 2024 for the following Liverpool Civic Place plus surface over space, 33 Moore Street, the existing library site, Hoxton Park Road. A scenario analysis including but not limited to potential rental income delays, projected lease yield and project cost escalation. Um, a briefing on council's long-term financial plan, including sensitivity analysis, council's forecast revenue expenditure streams and projected cash position. Was the point? Sorry Jen, was the point that we, um, that we finally agreed upon? There, I think I've read that out.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, it's the second dot point.
Okay, lovely. All right, lovely. I'll be put, the motion was cleared. Um, uh, thank you everybody. I now would like to, uh, declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you.